......
Lord, bless those who hold office in the government of our city that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice, and help them to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let the allegiance to the flag, liberty and states of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Bishop?
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Spatheau?
Here.
Chamberlain?
Here.
Blaisdell?
Here.
Everyone should have a copy of the November 6, 2012 regular meeting and the November 13, 2012 special meeting minutes. Any areas or revisions? We have communications on reports of commissions and boards. Everyone should have a copy of the planning commission meeting minutes of November 13, 2012, and board of zoning deals meeting minutes of November 15, 2012. Any comments on either of these?
I have just one there. The planning commission, I see there are some fire inspections that need done. About a month ago, I asked for copies of the fire inspections. Have those been done yet on these buildings?
On those buildings, they have not.
Will we get a copy when they're completed?
When they're completed.
Okay. Have we done any since my request?
It only just started. I had to renew my certificate, and that's what the last month is devoted for.
Okay.
Any other comments on these minutes? Okay. Recognition of persons desired to appear. Anyone who desire to speak to council this evening?
I'd like to thank council for supporting us by taking our lobbying up ballot. I want to thank the citizens of Columbiana for coming out of the women and supporting it. It's good to have the support of the community and the council. And we have a good group of people out there working hard for the city. It's nice to see them supporting us.
It's a good big job.
Thank you. Anyone else desire to speak to council this evening? Managerial report.
Okay, I gave you copy of the Public Service Department report for October. And I didn't have it on here, but normally about this time we'll present the budget. What I'd like to do this year is do a three-month budget, since you're going to have a new city manager. And that way, they'd be involved in preparing the final budget. Mike and I's plan is to present temporary budget for next year.
The first three months, you know, next year.
And also gave you copy of the bill list. Do you have any questions?
Anything on the bill list?
Oh, I got it.
Anything else with city manager? Do the link for the resolution and the ordinances. May I have the motion read them by title only?
The move. Second.
Dan?
Ferguson?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Blakeman?
Yes.
Resolution number 12-R-440, second reading. A resolution repealing resolution number 12-R-436 in authorizing the filing of petition for annexation of 86.734 acre tract of land situated in the northeast quarter of section 15, township Fairfield, county of Columbiana, state of Ohio.
The move. Second.
Any comments? Dan?
Bishop?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Blakeman?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 12-0-2706, second reading. An ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into a contract with Classical Construction LLC of Apple Creek, Ohio, for the cemetery office equipment storage building construction project for the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Dan?
King?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Blakeman?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moving into new business, first ordinance is an emergency ordinance, and motion to suspend the normal two readings and read it as an emergency.
So.
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, why is it an emergency?
Well, just because, you know, getting down to the end of the year here, trying to get our balances and balance stuff is to see where we're at for the end of the year so we can get started and get going more on the budget.
Is this money that's needed in these funds?
Yes.
I noticed the largest hit in there is $650,000 for the electric fund.
Correct.
What caused that?
Well, what was in the original appropriations for the biggest hit on that was the substation, was $400,000. And when we got the actual-
Which substation, north or south?
The north. And when we got the PO, the quote on the invoice, it was, it came in at $506,673. So that was right there, was over by $106,000. There was a change order, it was over $16,000, it was put through. And then the biggest item was the new substation for coal pump, which was $246,000. So that makes up the bulk of it.
Okay.
And there was also some engineering that went along with the coal pump substation that was not in the original budget either.
Is that inside the $250,000 that we approved, or is it in addition to the $250,000? It's outside of, by how much? Do you have, is the coal pump engineer?
It was $24,000.
Any other comments? What was, you said the PO was $106,000 above what we anticipated.
That was-
Why was that?
My little business was less, it came in higher, it came in much higher than we anticipated in the original appropriation. So we estimated it before we had bid?
That's correct.
Dan? Just read another version.
It was an emergency.
Number four there.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Okay, now the ordinance. Ordinance number 12-0-2707. The emergency ordinance amending appropriation ordinance 11-0-2671 by adding $18,000 in the park fund, $12,500 in the public safety vehicle fund, $40,000 in the ward fund, $625,000 in the electric fund, $150,000 in the self-funded health insurance fund, $650 in the bond retirement fund, and $118,500 in the special asset bond retirement fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they arise.
So.
Second.
Any other comments on this?
Why are we moving money into the self-funded health insurance fund?
We've got really hit hard this year with insurance claims. We've had some unbelievable, the month of February alone was $175,000.
In claims?
In claims. We've had some cash drop in health claims this year. They normally run around, I mean, it's a guess, but other than the $175,000, you had ones that are running in the $80,000, $70,000, that's a month. And the lowest was $34,000 back in January, which was the lowest month that we had claims. So we've gotten hit really hard. With some of this being reimbursed by the- Some, yeah, some of it is reimbursed by the stop loss.
How much?
You know, I don't have that number, I'm sorry.
Do we have any idea why all of a sudden we've got whacked with all these claims? Hundreds of thousands of dollars?
We have, we have a couple million.
Wow.
Beauty of self-insurance.
And where is this money coming from?
It's out of the self-insurance fund. It's coming from the unappropriated funds that were remaining.
So we have funds remaining-
Correct.
-that we're moving over. Do we know what we had remaining?
Yep. We originally could have appropriated $1,458,516. And what was appropriated for the year was $928,954. So we do have, we have about $530,000 that we appropriated. The original budget had claims at, appropriated $902,900, and we've already spent $985,983.
What do we have left in unappropriated funds?
$530,000.
That's even after this $150,000?
Oh, no, no.
That's before.
That's before, so we're at about $350,000.
Right.
Wow.
At what point are we going to start looking, maybe go outside for insurance rather than paying this ourselves? If we load this risk across carriers across the country, we wouldn't have to take this hit on our own. It would be loaded across.
Yeah, it's something you need to look at in the future. Over the years, we've done really well. This year was a bad year.
Last year was a bad year too.
Nearly like this.
We had those-
I know we've had this discussion before.
Well, the consultants told us that anyone under, was it 100 or 500, no, it was 1,000 employees, anyone under $1,000 really should not have their own self-funded-
Self-funded claim.
Yeah. I understand what someone, I don't know, but I know there's, with the Obamacare going and all that, it's going to change the whole system. So yeah, it's something probably should be looked at.
Our policy's up in the spring, is it not?
Yes.
April.
May. Yeah, and it runs through, the policy period runs from the beginning of May to the end of April.
So, I mean, the way we move, it'll take a couple of months. Can we start that process? I mean, we all agree, at least in the minutes, or talking to us about it?
I'd like to see that.
Like after the first year, after looking forward? Yeah, I mean, just to give us a couple of months.
Just to give us some, three or four months to look at it.
And whenever you shop insurance on a national level like that, it takes months, because I mean, we would have to, if you don't see this stuff, everyone would have to fill out an application of the health records that gets sent to the insurance companies, and they shop it out with what the risk is going to be, and they come back with what the cost is for the group.
We were contacted a month or so ago, and I don't know what they got. There's a consortium that got started up a few years ago in Ohio. And it's kind of, it's, I don't know what you want to call it, it's not really self-funded. Is that what you want to understand?
Yeah, I mean, it's like a group of municipalities who formed together, you know, for better argument, sort of that way.
But they don't self-fund their own plans? They go to insurance companies to do that?
Negotiating stronger numbers.
Yeah, I think that's what they're trying to do.
Like a pool.
Yeah, it is more like a pool. We actually have, have a meeting about it, and they've asked for some information.
You had in here a couple of years ago, a woman that came from Cincinnati.
From Cincinnati.
She's come to North Carolina throughout the last year and a half or so as well. It seems that they're doing a consulting, I don't know that we need to hire consultants, but I think we should at least get a couple of agents in and shop it, and get what the rates would be, and compare it to what we're doing currently, just to make sense about the shop it and seek. We don't have to change anything, but the shop.
How many city employees do we have?
It usually runs around, it's like the D6, full-time, that's full-time, but you know, what is it, the eligible for insurance?
And by the way, I forgot to mention that the insurance did go up 10% this year, the premiums, starting in May, it went up 10%.
Plus, we're paying that company a managing fee.
Yeah, aren't we paying them some kind of fee too? So we're paying them a fee plus they raise premiums.
Well, the premiums, I don't think have been raised in about two or three years.
Premiums were actually raised on the full, you know, on the fund.
So we didn't absorb that cost?
We were originally, we were part of the city.
We absorbed 90%.
90% of it, right.
Any other questions or comments? Dan?
Challenger? Yes.
Blakeman?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Yeah, depending on the agenda, for Blakeman, we would like to- Of course, I'd make my motion, I'd like to give a little bit of background on this. But it lay the recent personnel changes affecting city managers, and I believe that it's in the best interest of this council to vote tonight. Auto-renew the city attorney contract for another year. Per the contract you signed in December of 2008, Article 5 states, "This agreement may be terminated by either party here to, said termination being effective on the 30th day after the receipt of a written notice of termination by either party. Furthermore, unless a written notice of termination is received by either party prior to December 1 of 2009, or December 1 of any subsequent year, this agreement shall be deemed to be in full force and effective for an additional one-year term." In lieu of that, I would like to make a motion to immediately send the required written notice of termination of this agreement to our current municipal attorney, Dan Blaisdell. If the bill I need to terminate knows prior to the December 1, 2012 deadline, this will prevent the contract from auto-renewing for an additional one-year term. And before it be forwarded, if this motion were to pass, I would be making a second motion, and we advertise the prospect to fill the municipal attorney position. Have that sent the attention of the mayor, and he should receive it by the number 30 to have them in our practice to review. And I look to interview him possibly, pointing you are a renewed municipal attorney at the December 4 meeting, and our current city attorney is invited and welcome to apply for the position. Bring the motion, let's get it official, we put the comments. Bring the motion, we have second?
Second.
Okay, comments? The reason that I made that the second motion, this is not to censure you, Dan, or to say that council has a problem with you. I don't believe that there should be an auto-renewal of this agreement. In lieu of everything that we have going on from executive management of this city, I think to auto-renew, whenever we don't know what the landscape is going to look like three months from now, four months from now, I think that, first of all, it presents a problem for, 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 for just two reasons. One is the Mandamus issue that we have going on. If the new interim city manager comes into this position, they effectively will be involved in this suit. And if they would choose to not want to pursue it, and give this council information that we requested, and you choose not to, and the way I see this, day one, we're putting an interim city manager with a load of errands that they have to do, a position where they have to take a side, whether to work with you, the person that's going to be giving them the information every day, where this council is requesting this information from. And I don't think it's fair to stick someone in that position on the first day on the job. And so, I'm not suggesting that you would not be the city manager. I think it's something that the council will have to try to pick, but that's a powerful thing when we're considering an auto-renewal that has to be done by December 1st. And so, my motion is to simply end the auto-renewal. Take resumes from yourself, if you're still wanting to do it, as well as anyone else in the city that wants to do it. And we just take them, interview them, if this council sees fit, to have you stay there in this position, so be it. So this has nothing to do with, I don't want you to be here, but to auto-renew it and not have that opportunity, I just don't think it makes sense. That's why I made this motion.
I'd just like to comment that real quick, I spoke with Dan on his contract, and the auto-renew was strictly for wages. He assured me that anytime council desired, we could get rid of him. Second of all, my dealings with Dan, between what we've done in here and Mayor's Court, Mayor's Court, he's done a wonderful job cleaning up the tax cases. When I first started doing tax cases in Mayor's Court, it was bombarded. We actually had many more tax cases than we did, including violations and other violations. Since then, we've collected a considerable amount of tax money and fines, as much as $800, $799, including the court costs. Newest people, which we didn't really want to collect, we just wanted facts. We cleaned that up, and he brought to us, like Mayor's Court, after Mayor's Court on Monday, he brought the final list we were dealing with right now. We're down to one problematic person we're working on. That has been cleaned up tremendously in his time that he's worked with me in Mayor's Court. So I don't see any reason to terminate this contract at this time, especially since he assured me that we can get rid of him anytime the council so desired.
This isn't terminating the contract, it's just-
It's terminating his wages.
No, it's auto-renew, just that the contract itself is an auto-renew, it doesn't say that it's just a wage.
I, I, I got the packet and I was surprised and I wasn't surprised to see the same here. But due to the fact that we can go to executive session, talk about personnel, renewing contracts and so on, I think this was kind of a low way to just spring saying this on. And I think it sends a message to the non-union and management personnel at the city that all of a sudden, can something be brought up that wasn't even discussed by council before this, expecting us to vote on something. And I chose, with Keith going, we couldn't even, if we didn't have a person the first month, we couldn't do ordinances, resolutions, we couldn't buy it. We couldn't do anything. And the job that he's done, I feel that he's earned his, earned his keep, and I, for one, am not in favor of not renewing this. I just think it sends a bad message when you just, out of the, I know you gave him some reasons-
I noticed that you never contacted, you were concerned about it.
Well, this should have been done two months ago, one month ago, and we could have had an executive session discussed all these things. Just to bring it up, we're going to do it at the next meeting when I get it on Friday, that isn't very much time. And I don't think it's, it even sends a message to the city employees how things would be handled. I just, I just think it's bad the whole way around. I think it was bad the whole way around.
That's fine, but at what level? That's against the city employees, since this council has no authority to do anything to the employees. I just would like to know that. I mean, if you want to play games with them and try to scare them.
I'm not playing games with them. It would only be with the non-union management.
We can't do anything.
We can't do anything with non-union management?
They work at the leisure of the city manager. I'm just saying, I mean-
We can't fire or hire anybody that's owned by the city manager.
I didn't expect you to go yes. I just felt like I needed to do what I thought was best.
I like your call for the vote, Dan.
Well, you interrupted me, hold on. You asked, me and my doctor, you were, I'm going to finish this. I ran for office because I felt like things weren't being done right. You don't have to agree with me. We can have differences of opinion every day, doesn't mean that either one of us are wrong. And again, I started this by saying that this isn't a censure of Dan, and knowing so far I wrote this, that he was welcome to apply, to do it. I didn't say that, no, Dan, we don't want you to have another contract, did I? Did I state that? What I submitted to you says the exact opposite. Our current city attorney is invited to apply to this position. It doesn't say anywhere that we don't want that. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say that, you know, the Mandamus issue, I think, is kind of at the center of this contract. You know, if we do bring a new city manager in, which we will eventually, I don't want them butting heads with us or the attorney. I mean, it'd be nice just to start fresh. So, you know, that's just my opinion. Everybody wants to give them pen.
Me in your favor, or getting someone else?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, is anybody in the audience?
Could you have a speech? Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to speak? Yes.
Drop out for him, for those that don't know who I am. I would just like to say, I can't believe this council is sitting here not saying anything. Dan has kept this city out of trouble for 30 years. Mr. Blakeman, ever since you became a councilman, you have done nothing but cut the city down. I don't know why you're even here. You have undermined the authority of Mr. Blaisdell. You have cut, you have cut down management from day one. I don't understand why you're here. If our town was so bad, why did you come here in the first place? Now, for the rest of, I sat there for nine years. I know what council's place is. Council's place is not to micromanage anybody or anything, and that is what you're doing.
Okay.
And excuse me, Mr. King, you work for Mr. Blakeman.
No, I do not.
You don't work for Mr. Blakeman?
No, I do not.
Make sure you understand.
I do not work for Mr. Blakeman.
You don't?
No, I do not.
Okay. I'm sorry. This council needs, we're losing management. We do not have, as Mr. Schoniger said, we need somebody here to keep a little bit of consistency going on in this town. Mr. Blaisdell has been above and beyond what we could ever have wanted. I would suggest you don't let this happen. I'm really upset that you feel that our town is something that it's not. We have the best town that you could ever want.
I agree, that's why invested time that I do.
But you never come off that way, Brian. From day one, you have, you have cut this town down. You have, you've said you don't like the way things will run.
I don't.
So then, why did you come here?
Because I think what council is supposed to do here for our charter is to do that.
We are, but we're not to micromanage. We are to-
I'm not micromanaging anything. The charter states, I mean, that's a-
Okay, that's all I have to say. Just, I know, and I apologize. Just, just, I, I know, and I apologize. I just...
I understand your...
You know what this town means to me, and I hate what's going on here. I hate it. Because this town means everything to me. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment now that everybody's blowing steam here. I don't, I don't think Mr. Blakeman, or anyone on this council, is trying to ruin the city. And I don't appreciate you coming to tell us that they're trying to do here, is make sure that we, we create change. We can't live under the same management style for 30 years. If we do, I guarantee you, we won't grow. You may not like growing, it may be painful, but if we want the city to get better, we better do something, as opposed to sitting around happy with the way we've done things for 20 years. And I've heard that on this council many times. When I question things, I always get the same answer. We've always done it that way. And if we've always done it that way, and it's not working, we should change.
What's not working?
Lots of things.
We have changed, Mr. Bishel. We went from a little town to a city.
I'm not, I'm not arguing your case. You've had your time. You said you hated it, okay? I've got it. I want you to know how I feel, and you should have it.
Let's vote.
Ferguson?
No.
Bishel?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Schoniger?
No.
Callenger?
No.
Three, three, Mr. Mayor.
I vote no.
Let's give you my last one. And, which, this, this might, well, part of why you feel the way you do about me, that the things that I see there are part of all. I'm going to make a motion that we repeal the vote from November 6th, the appointed Richard McVane, the six-year term on the planning commission, without taking letters of interest from the general public for the position. We should take resumes until Thursday, December 13th, and have the resumes or letters of interest in our council package December 14th, and vote on the appointment December 18th. I don't even mind if it's Mr. McVane, but at the meeting that this was ran through a couple of weeks...
Can you repeat the second, please?
Second.
At the meeting that this was done at, there was only five council members here. This appointment wasn't up until December 31st, there was seven weeks. It was brought up at that time that there was someone else in the city that had applied and brought a letter in. Keith didn't remember that. We asked for this to be tabled, since there was five people, and we had a meeting, and the whole council was here. That table was voted down, and it was ran through, knowing that someone else had wanted the, the position, without ever giving any consideration in that, without giving this full, full council consideration. Three members of this council rammed it through. That doesn't, in my mind, nor should it in yours, present a level of trust that, i- if we want the city to grow, and you, you welcome people from this city to, to be a part of the city that they live in, to have an appointment that takes six years, and to put someone in there without ever advertising, without ever taking applications, without looking at any other resumes, without interviewing anyone else, and just saying, okay, the guy that we, we ran for election with last November wants this job again, so we're, we're going to silence it from the public, and we're going to ram it through when we don't have a full council here. That's what I think is wrong. So, if you can...
You're going to have a hard time proving that.
I don't approve, it's in the minutes that you approved.
You're going to have a hard time proving that's the objective.
I didn't say that wasn't the objective.
You're just not true saying that. I said the objective, to ramrod this through. And I take offense to that now.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, but that's what's in the minutes that we approved. It was called for, for it to be tabled, and it was voted down the table.
Don't you tell me how I vote. And don't you tell me what I said.
Can you read the minutes, and be the one who's here for me?
Don't you tell me that, that I ramrod us something through. Don't you use those words about me.
Well, ask for a table, and the table was denied.
Also, your point has been made.
Also, in the paper, it said, you said this was possibly personal.
In what paper?
In Katie's paper.
No, she said that Bob said that, and that Bob didn't say that. I read it.
Did you say it, Katie?
You know, Mr. Blakeman, when you ran against me and, and Mr. King for these, these seats we're in right now, I remember you telling me that you got more votes than Mr. King and I did, and the public spoke a little bit louder about you. Is that right?
It is.
And you wanted to be on the planning commission. But I got voted on, that's one of the nights you said that. Mr., Mr. McVane ran for city council, and it was five votes or something, I don't know what...
Don't tell me how many votes it was, Josh.
So many votes away from Bob. I would say that the public has spoken.
Why? If no one else has had that?
I say the public has spoken. I accept that. I hope there's other people who accept that on that. I know the citizens sure accepted, he almost became a councilman. And I know that the board, everyone on the board of that commission is happy with Dick's, so why don't we just keep going like we did before? And deny any new person a chance? The city spoke, the council spoke, and we're about to speak right now. So, I call for the vote.
The city didn't speak on plan.
Yes, they did.
When did they do that?
The man got votes to become councilman. You don't think that the city would support him as a chairman?
I'm not, they, they very well might, but I'm very, Brian's...
They're not making my point, thank you.
I didn't say it wasn't...
I call for the vote.
If we might, maybe somebody else on the city wants to do it.
Why didn't they come forward?
They weren't invited.
I haven't seen anybody here. The gentleman you're talking about, has he ever been here?
No, not yet.
He's here all gone. Where is he?
Right back there.
How come you haven't expressed your opinion that you wanted to be on commission?
I, I, I'm offended by that, because I really did. The last time there was a public announcement was when a person from the planning commission was appointed. I did send a letter in with my name.
Okay, that's the point that Keith made last night. Did you get the letter, Keith?
I probably did, but, you know, I don't keep them from...
This council doesn't keep them from...
Well, I don't care about that.
So, the decision that we made that night, in my opinion, was a good decision, and I'll stick to it.
I have no problems with that.
And I apologize to you for not having your letter here for us to see.
I have no problems with that. But we, as a public, should have an opportunity.
We should also... And I made, I made it clear that night that there were any left, very... It's kind of a...
Any comments? Ian?
I don't know, why don't we look?
Mr. Bishel?
Yes.
Yes.
Schoniger?
No.
Callenger?
No.
Blakeman?
Yes.
Three, three, Mr. Mayor.
I vote no, just fine.
I'd like to make the comment that I think we got the best man for the job.
How do you know? We didn't get other applications.
I said I made the comment, don't question me, I don't have to...
I can question you.
I don't have to answer you.
Stop that.
I'm just saying, I think, how do you know that?
If they did this, I thought we took the best man.
We took the best man because he was the only one here that was definitely able to apply.
Go make a comment, make a comment.
I am making a comment.
It's your argument back and forth.
Others are first. We're making comments, the one...
I'd like to say, though, from now on, anyone who is interested in any position, send your letter in at any time, and there to be filed and kept on record until a position's open. I think we also should have, I see the sign out there has the members of the different commissions and boards, we should probably put on there the dates, their term expires, so people can come in and see what that is from now on, and then they can see what the date is, that their term's ending up, they can apply for a position.
You send the letter to...
Send it to the city manager's office.
City manager.
I will instruct my assistants to have file on it.
Couldn't we do anything?
Any of the letters going to the time.
Anything on the city website, even though not everybody has access to it, but at least if there's something that's coming up term-wise, advertise it there?
Sure.
I think on the city website, I'm sorry, I interrupted. Couldn't we put the, the term date on there also?
We could do that.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Can we put it on channel 32 as well?
Do we list that on council? Councilmen's names or planning commission's names?
I don't see why not, it's a, it's a...
I was saying, we don't do that now, including what you said.
All right. Next items, we have executive session planned. There's three of them. First one's consider purchase of property. The second one's consider sale or lease of real property or interest therein, and the third one is to discussion personnel. Dan, what did you go to executive session?
I'd like to make that motion, and I make the suggestion that we do the, the one with Mr. Blakeman first, so we don't keep paying him any more.
That's what I said.
I make a motion, we want to go to executive session.
A second.
We need one to deal with attorney mayor first, because he's power link.
Not that...
Free, free.
Is that all right?
Simple pain, one more.
Sure. Save money by making them first.
Okay. Tell me one comment before we go to session.
Did I get a motion? Did I get a second?
We do have a second.
Okay, yes, you may.
Joyce, I respect your opinions, I truly do. I know you sat up here for a long time. But where I work, or work, does not influence my, my vote. And last I looked, the mayor and another councilperson are related. So, for you to say to me that I worked at one dime for Brian, which I did, but I no longer do, really is pretty offensive that you think that his vote would sway the way I vote. That is completely incorrect.
And I'm not saying that it would, but the...
Then why did you even bring it up?
The appearance is, if that was still true, the, the appearance would not be...
Brian and I have voted differently many a times.
Okay, and that's, and I apologize for even suggesting that.
Okay.
And just for the record, Callenger and I, she's my sister-in-law, please, someone didn't know that we argued.
Here, applause.
Okay, we need a, for those on, for the executive session.
Bishel?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor? One more question, whether there'll be action taken after, so the people will know whether to sit here or not.
I believe so.
You think there may be action?
I think, I think there's a good chance.
There may be action after the executive session.
You know what, I'd probably give one of your points. There's not really a lot here to choose. You might get maybe a Duncan Dowell to call here. You know what, I promise you, if you use a Duncan Dowell's analogy, it's... Probably your Duncan, sheets. You can, you can...
New condution there.
We didn't, we were voting.
Chief?
First, you go.
May I motion come out to executive session?
Second.
Ian? King?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callenger?
Yes.
Bishel?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we advertise for bids, for leasing parts, portions of the 20 acres of city land for gas exploration. Advertising for bids only.
Motion, you have a second?
Second.
Any comments?
As Holt said, this is just for bids. It doesn't mean we're going to do anything, just bids.
Ian?
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callenger?
Yes.
Bishel?
Yes.
Brian, do you want to make a statement?
No. At this point, we should let the public know what we're doing, from the executive session standpoint, we're, we're working on criteria of what we're looking for, and I think the public should know, that as much as we don't go along up here, I think we've had two sessions, and I'll almost speak of what they are. I think on, on the subject of who we, what are the attributes of someone that we appoint, I think we're all, all, seven of us on the same page. And I think it's strong to send that message to everyone in the city that we, we can dispute the, the details. I think that's why so many personalities are up here, but I think the person that sits in that seat, especially from the start, needs to have the support of the entire council. So, we're, we truly are working back there to, to get to the point where the person that we rally behind, we are all, all behind. I want to make that comment, because it seems that there's a, we're back there, and it kind of looks appearance-wise, and there's no action going on, but there is a lot of action, and none of us are brutes.
We're bleeding.
We're bleeding. We're bleeding. I just want to make that comment.
We were putting a group together, myself, Councilman Bishel, and Dan, who specializes in human resources, where we get together, come up with a minimum requirements for the job, and we'll be advertising for the position very soon. Dan? Any council comments?
I would like to make one. I asked the other day, but I'm with us on the whole thing on the website, and we, and we mentioned others in the morning earlier yesterday. Between my site and the city senate, we had 12 people in the community, it wasn't a large showing, but the, the comments that we got were ages long, and the people that supplied their thoughts to us were extremely detailed, and they were, they're very, very personal, like, they spent a lot of time and thought that they, they put in here, and we, we don't have their names, but I'd like to say thank you to the people that, that took the time to do that, that sends a message to us, even if it's a, a sampling, and some people that are, that care enough to take the time to do it, and tells us what they're interested in, to, to say thank you to that.
And as far as the city service director goes, haven't come to any conclusion, really, that's for the city manager to appoint. So, we haven't come to any decision on that as well. I know there are people in the audience who might be interested, and I will recommend to anybody interested, submit a resume, and then when we find a city manager, that will be one of the city manager's tasks to appoint that person. And one thing I'd like to say, that's not a secret, Keith in one of his letters said he will not appoint a service director, is that, and I appreciate that, I truly do. I appreciate that fact, that he will not do that. I think that's good. I think the new city manager is someone who needs to take care of that, so.
Any other council comments?
I want to make that comment, because it seems that there's a, we're back there and it kind of looks appearance-wise, there's no action going on, but there is a lot of action. And none of us are brutes.
We're bleeding. We're bleeding.
I just want to make that comment.
We were putting a group together, myself, Councilman Bishop, and Deanne, who specializes in human resource. We're gonna get together, come up with a minimum requirements for the job, and be advertising for the position very soon. Ian? Any council comments?
I would like to make one. I asked the other day, but nobody was on the whole thing on the website. And they mentioned others in the morning earlier yesterday. Between my site and the city senate, we had 12 people in the community, it wasn't a large showing. But the comments that we got from ages long, and the people that supplied their thoughts to us were extremely detailed. And they were very, very personal, like they spent a lot of time and thought that they put into us. And we don't have their names, but I'd like to say thank you to the people that took the time to do that, that sends a message to us. Even if it's a sampling, some people that are care enough to take the time to do it, that tells us what they're interested in. To say thank you for that.
And as far as the city service director goes, haven't come to any conclusion. Really, that's for the city manager to appoint. So we haven't come to any decision on that as well. I know there are people in the audience who might be interested. I will recommend to anybody interested, submit a resume. And then when we find a city manager, that will be one of the city manager's tasks to appoint that person. And one thing I'd like to say, and it's not a secret, Keith in one of his letters said he will not appoint a service director. And I appreciate that, I truly do. I appreciate that fact, that he will not do that. I think that's good. I think the new city manager is someone who needs to take care of that, so.
Any other council comments? Motion to adjourn.
So right now, I think we find what you're pushing for.
Like all the city council meetings, the representative, the council, we can collect.
Lord, bless those who hold office in the government of our city, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice, and help them to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bishop?
Here. Here.
Schoninger?
Here.
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 Spatheal?
Here.
Chandler?
Here.
Waitman?
Here. Everyone should have a copy of the November 6, 2012 regular meeting, and the November 13, 2012 special meeting minutes, writing here for emissions. These fans presented. We have communications, a report of commissions and boards. Everyone should have a copy of the planning commission meeting minutes of November 13, 2012, and board of zoning deals meeting minutes of November 15, 2012. Any comments on either of these?
I have just one there. The planning commission, I see there are some fire inspections that need done. And about a month ago, I asked for copies of the fire inspections, have those been done yet on these buildings?
On those buildings, they have not.
Well, we get a copy when they're completed?
When they're completed.
Okay. Have we done any since my request?
It only just started, I had to renew my certificate, and that's what the last month was devoted for.
Okay.
Any other comments on these minutes? Recognition of persons desired to appear, anyone who desire to speak to council this evening?
I just want to thank council for supporting us, my chairman, Levon Ballack. I want to thank the citizens of Columbia for coming out of the women and supporting it. Just good to have the support of the community and the council. And we have a good group of people out there working hard for the city, it's nice to see them supporting us. Because you do a big job.
Thank you. Anyone else who's trying to speak to council this evening? Manager's report.
Just kind of gave you copy of the Public Service Department report for October. And I didn't have it on here, but normally about this time, we'll present the budget. What I'd like to do this year is do a three-month budget, since you're gonna have a new city manager. And that way, they'd be involved in preparing the final budget and stuff. So Mike and I's plan is to present temporary budget for next year. For the first three months, you know, next year. And also gave you copy of the bill list, give me questions to comment.
Any on the bill list?
All got them.
Anything else with city manager? Do the link for the resolution of the ordinances, may I have a motion, read them by title only?
So moved. Second.
Ian?
Ferguson?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Schoninger?
Yes.
Counters? Yes. Waitman?
Yes. Resolution number 12 dash R dash 440, second reading. Resolution repealing resolution number 12 dash R dash 436, and authorizing the filing of petition for annexation of 86.734 acre tract of land situated in the northeast quarter of section 15, Township Fairfield, County of Columbia, State of Ohio.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Ian?
Bishop?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Schoninger?
Yes.
Counters? Yes. Waitman?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 12 dash 0 dash 2706, second reading. An ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into a contract with Classical Construction LLC of Apple Creek, Ohio, for the cemetery office equipment storage building construction project to the city of Columbia.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Ian?
King?
Yes.
Schoninger?
Yes.
Counters? Yes. Waitman?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Even in the new business, first ordinance is an emergency ordinance, and motion to suspend the normal two readings and read it as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, why is it an emergency?
Well, just because, you know, getting down to the end of the year here, trying to get our balances and balance up this to see what we're at for the end of the year, so we can get, you know, start going more on the budget.
Is this money that's needed in these funds?
Yes.
I noticed the largest hit in there is $650,000 for the electric fund.
Correct.
What caused that?
Well, what was in the original appropriations for the, the biggest hit on that was the substation, was $400,000. And when we got the actual-
Which, which substation, north side?
The north.
Okay.
And when we got the, the PO, the quote on the invoice, it was, it came in at $506,673. So that was right there, it was over by $106,000. There was a change order, it was over $16,000, it was put through. And then the biggest item was the new substation for coal pump, which was $246,000. So that, that makes up the bulk of it.
Okay.
And there was also some engineering that went on with the coal pump substation that was not in the original budget either.
Is that inside the $250,000 that we approved, or is it in addition to the $250,000 that we approved?
It's outside.
It's outside of, by how much?
Do you have, who's the coal pump engineer? It was $24,000.
Oh, okay.
Any other comments?
What was, you said we, the PO was $106,000 above what we anticipated.
That was-
Why was that?
My little business was that, it came in higher, came in much higher than we estimated in the original appropriation.
So we estimated that before we had bid?
That's correct.
Ian? Just, just read it as a version.
It was an emergency.
We have it down, it's four there.
Schoninger?
Yes.
Counters? Yes. Ferguson?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be the ordinance. Ordinance number 12 dash 0 dash 2707. The emergency ordinance amending appropriation ordinance 11 dash 0 dash 2671, by adding $18,000 in the park fund, $12,500 in the public safety vehicle fund, $40,000 in the ward fund, $625,000 in the electric fund, $150,000 in the self-funded health insurance fund, $650 in the bond retirement fund, and $118,500 in the special assessment bond retirement fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they arise.
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments on this?
Why are we moving money into the self-funded health insurance fund?
Um, we've got really hit hard this year with insurance claims. We've had some unbelievable, the month of February alone was $175,000.
In claims?
Well, claims. We've had some, some cash drop in health claim this year. They normally run around, I mean, it's a guess, but other than the $175,000, we had ones that are running in the $80,000, $70,000, that's a month. And, and the lowest was $34,000 back in January, which was the lowest month that we had claims. So we've gotten hit really hard. Was some of this being reimbursed by the? Some, yeah, some of it is reimbursed by the stock loss.
How much?
You know what, I don't have that number, I'm sorry.
Do we have any idea why all of a sudden we've got whacked with all these claims? Hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Yeah, we have, we have a couple million.
Wow.
Beauty of self-insure-
And where is this money coming from?
It's, it's out of the self-insurance fund. It was, it's coming from the unappropriated funds that were remaining.
So we have funds remaining?
Correct.
That we're moving over, do we know what we had remaining?
Yep. We recently could have appropriated $1,458,516. And what was appropriated for the year was $928,954. So we, we had, we do have, we have about $530,000 that we appropriated. The original budget had claims at, appropriated $902,900. And we've already spent $985,983.
What do we have left in unappropriated funds?
$530,000.
That's even after this $150,000?
Oh, no, no, that's before.
That's before, so we're at about $350,000.
Right.
Wow.
At what point are we gonna start looking, maybe go outside for insurance rather than pay this ourselves? If we load this risk across other carriers across the country, we wouldn't have to take this hit on our own, if we loaded across.
Yeah, it's, it's something, you know, need to look at in the future. Over the years, we've done really well. This year, both together.
Last year was a bad year, too.
Nearly like this.
We had those-
I know we've had this discussion before.
Well, the consultants told us that anyone under, is it 100 or 500? No, it was 1,000 employees, anyone that 1,000 employees should not have their own self-funded-
Self-funded claim.
Yeah. I understand what some of them say, I don't know, but I know there's, with the Obama care going, in fact, it's gonna change the whole system, so it's something probably should be looked at.
Our policy's up in the spring, is it not?
Yeah.
April.
May.
Yeah, and it runs through, the policy period runs from the beginning of May to the end of April.
So, I mean, the way we move, it'll take a couple of months, can we start that process? I mean, we all agree, we need to talk into us about it?
I'd like to see that.
Again, for first year, that's real before?
Yeah, I mean, just to give us a couple of-
Just to give us some, some three or four months to look at it.
Whenever you shop insurance on a national level like that, it takes months, because I mean, we would have to, you don't see this stuff, but everyone would have to fill out an application of the health records that gets sent to the insurance companies, and they shop it out with what the risk is gonna be, and they come back with what the cost is for the group.
We were contacted a month or so ago, and I don't know what they got. There's a consortium that got started up a few years ago in Ohio. And it's kind of, it's, it's, we don't know, it's, it's not really self-funded, is that what you understand?
Yeah, I mean, it's like a group of municipalities who formed together, you know, for better bargaining strategy that way.
But they don't self-fund their own plans, they go to insurance companies to do that?
Negotiate the stronger number of things.
Yeah, I think that's what you're trying to do.
Like a pool.
Yeah, it is more like a pool. We have, we actually have, have, I'm meeting with them, and they've asked us some information.
Somebody that you had in here a couple of years ago, a woman that came from Cincinnati?
From Cincinnati.
She's kept in contact throughout the last year and a half or so as well. This is another group of consultants, I don't know if we can hire consultants, but I think we should at least, get a couple of agents in and shop it, and get what the rates would be, and compare it to what we're doing internally, just to make sense, not to shop it and seek. We don't have to change anything to shop.
How many city employees do we have?
Yeah, it usually runs around.
It's like the E6, full-time, that's full-time, not, you know, way too eligible for insurance. And then, by the way, that I forgot to mention, the insurance paid you about 10% this year, the premiums. Starting, starting in May, it's around 10%.
Plus, we're paying that company, managing that fee.
Yeah, aren't we paying them some kind of fee to? They're paying them a fee plus they raise premiums.
Well, the premiums, I don't think, have been raised in about two or three years.
Premiums were actually raised on the full, you know, on the fund.
So we didn't absorb that cost?
We did, yeah, absorb part of the sum.
We absorbed 90%.
90% of it, right.
Any other questions or comments? Ian?
Counters? Yes. Waitman?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Schoninger?
Yes.
Yeah, next item on the agenda, for waitmen, would like to- Of course, I make a motion, I'd like to give a little bit of background on this. But it lay the recent personnel changes affecting city management, and I believe that it's in the best interest of this council to vote tonight, to not automatically renew the city attorney contract for another year. For the contract we signed in December of 2018, Article 5 states this agreement may be terminated by either party here to, said termination being effective on the 30th day after the receipt of a written notice of termination by either party. Furthermore, unless a written notice of termination is received by either party prior to December 1 of 2009, or December 1 of any subsequent year, this agreement shall be deemed to be in full force and effective for an additional one-year term. But in lieu of that, I would like to make a motion to immediately send the required written notice of termination of this agreement, or curriculable- notice of termination of this agreement to our current municipal attorney, Dan Blaisdell, to fulfill our need to terminate notice prior to the December 1, 2012 deadline. This will prevent the contract from auto-renewing for an additional one-year term. And according before, if this motion were to pass, I would be making a second motion to re-advertise the prospects to fill the municipal attorney position. Have that sent the attention of the mayor, he should receive them by November 30th, have them in our practice to review, and look to interview and possibly appoint a new or renewed municipal attorney at the December 4 meeting, and our current city attorney is invited and welcome to apply for the position.
We have a motion, let's get it official, we put a comment, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, comments?
The, the reason that I made that the second motion, this is not to, to censure you, Dan, or to say that council has a problem with you. I don't believe that there should be an auto-renewal of this agreement. In lieu of everything that we have going on from the executive management of this city, I think to auto-renew, whenever we don't know what the landscape is going to look like three months from now, four months from now, I think that, first of all, it presents a problem for, 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 well, just two reasons. One is the Mandamus issue that we have going on. If the new interim city manager comes into this position, they effectively will be involved in this suit. And if they would choose to not want to pursue it and give this council information that we requested, and you choose not to, and the way I see this, day one, we're putting an interim city manager with a load of everything else that they have to do in a position where they have to take a side, where they're working with you, the person that's gonna be giving them the information every day, where this council, they're requesting this information from. And I, I don't think it's fair to stick someone in, in, in that position on the first day on the job. And, um, so I, I'm not suggesting that, that you would not be the, the city manager. I think it's something that the council fully has to try to pick, but that's a, a powerful thing when we're considering an auto-renewal, it has to be done by December 1st. And so my motion is, is to simply end the auto-renewal. Take, take resumes from yourself, if you're still wanting to do it, as well as anyone else in the city that wants to do it. And, um, we just take them, interview them, if this council sees fit to have you stay there in this position, so be it. So this, this had nothing to do with, um, not wanting you to be here, but to auto-renew it and not have that opportunity, I, I just don't think makes sense. That's why I can use the motion.
I'd just like to comment real quick, uh, I spoke of being on his contract, and, uh, the auto-renew was strictly through wages. He assured me that anytime the council desired, we could get rid of him. Second of all, my views were, Dan, uh, between what we've done in here and Mayor's Court, uh, Mayor's Court, he's done a wonderful job cleaning up the tax cases. When I first started doing tax cases in Mayor's Court, it was bombarded, we actually had many more tax cases than we did, um, including violations and other violations. Since then, we've collected a considerable amount of tax money and fines, as much as $800, 799, including the court costs for numerous people, which we didn't really want to collect, we just wanted facts. We cleaned that up, and he brought to us, like, Mayor's Court, I had with Mayor's Court on Monday, he brought, uh, the final list, we're dealing with right now, and we're down to one problematic person we're working on. That, that has been cleaned up tremendously in his time that he's worked with me in Mayor's Court. So I, I don't see any reason to, to, uh, terminate this contract at this time, especially since he assured me that we can get rid of him anytime the council so desired.
This isn't terminating the contract, it, it's just.
It's terminating his wages.
No, it's auto-renew, this, the contract itself is an auto-renewal, it doesn't say that it's just a, a wage.
I, I, I go?
Yeah?
I got the packet and, uh, I, I was surprised and I wasn't surprised to see the same here. But due to the fact that we can go to executive station to decide, uh, talk about personnel, renewing contracts and so on, I think this was kind of a, a low way to just, to just spring, uh, saying this on. And I think it, it sends a message to the, uh, non-union and, uh, management personnel at the city that all of a sudden can something be brought up that wasn't even discussed by council before this, expecting us to vote on something. And I took, uh-huh, with Keith going, we couldn't even, if we didn't have a, uh, person the first month, we couldn't do ordinances, resolutions, we couldn't, but, we couldn't do anything. And the job that he's done, I, I feel that he's earned his, uh, earned his keep, and I, I for one am not, um, in favor of not renewing this. I just think it sends a bad message when you just, out of the, uh, I know you gave him some reasons.
I gave him a notice and you never contacted him.
You, you, you've given so, well, this should have been done two months ago, one month ago, and we could have had an executive station discuss all these things. Just to bring it up, we're gonna do it at the next meeting when I get it on Friday, that isn't very much time, and I, I don't think it's, it even sends a message to the city employees how things would be handled. I, I just, I just think it's bad the whole way around. I think it was bad the whole way around.
That's fine, but, but at what level, that's an emergency to the city employees, since this council has no authority to do anything to the city employees? I just would like to know that, I mean, if you wanna play games with them and try to scare them.
I'm not playing games with them, it would only be with the non-union management.
We can't do anything.
We can't do anything with non-union management?
They work at the leisure of the city manager. I'm, I'm just saying, I mean.
We can't fire or hire anybody, that's owned by the city manager.
And I didn't expect you to go yes, I just felt like I needed to do what I thought was best, I got.
I'd like your call for the vote, Dan.
Well, you interrupted me, hold on, you, you asked, uh, me to not talk to you, but I'm, I'm gonna finish this. I ran for, for office because I, I felt like things weren't being done right. You don't have to agree with me, we can have differences of opinion every day, doesn't mean that, that either one of us are wrong. And again, I started this by saying that this isn't a censure of Dan, and I went so far, I wrote this, that he was welcome to, to apply, to, to do it. I didn't say that, no, Dan, we don't want you to, to have another contract, did I? Did I state that? I mean, I, what I submitted to you says the exact opposite. Our current city attorney is invited to apply to this position. Doesn't say anywhere that, that we don't want that.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to say that, you know, the Mandamus issue, I think, is kind of at the center of, uh, of this contract. You know, if we do bring a new city manager in, which we will eventually, um, I don't want them butting heads with us or the attorney. I mean, it'd be nice just to start fresh. So, you know, that, that's just my opinion, everybody wants to give them pen.
I mean, you're in favor of getting someone else?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, um, is anybody in the audience?
Could you have a speech? Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to speak? Yes.
Do I sound foreign, for those that don't know who I am? I would just like to say, I can't believe this council is sitting here not saying anything. Dan has kept this city out of trouble for 30 years. Mr. Blakeman, ever since you became a councilman, you have done nothing but cut the city down, I don't know why you're even here. You have undermined the authority of Mr. Blaisdell. You have cut, you have cut down management from day one. I don't understand why you're here. If our town was so bad, why didn't you come here in the first place? Now, for the rest of, I sat there for nine years, I know what council's place is. Council's place is not to micromanage anybody or anything, and that is what you're doing.
Okay.
And excuse me, Mr. King, you work for Mr. Blakeman.
No, I do not.
You don't work for Mr. Blakeman?
No, I do not.
Are you sure you understand?
I do not work for Mr. Blakeman.
You don't?
No, I do not.
Okay. I'm sorry. This council needs, we're losing a manager. We do not have, as, as Mr. Schoniger said, we need somebody here to keep a little bit of consistency going on in this town. Mr. Blaisdell has been above and beyond what we could ever have wanted. I would suggest you don't let this happen. I'm, I'm really upset that you feel that our town is something that it's not. We have the best town that you could ever want.
I agree, that's why I invested time that I do in it.
But you never come off that way, Brian. From day one, you have, you have cut this town down, you have, you've said you don't like the way things were run.
I don't.
So then why did you come here?
Because I think what council is supposed to do here for our charter is to do that.
We are.
That's what I'm.
But we're not to micromanage, we are to.
I'm not micromanaging anything, the charter states that, I mean, that's a, 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 a council.
Okay, that's all I have to say, just, just, I, I know, and I apologize, I just.
I understand your.
You know what this town means to me, and I hate what's going on here. I hate it. Because this town means everything to me. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment now that everybody's blowing steam here. I don't, I don't think Mr. Blakeman or anyone on this council is trying to ruin the city. And I don't appreciate you coming to tell us a thing. What we're trying to do here is make sure that we, we create change. We can't live under the same management style for 30 years. If we do, I guarantee you we won't grow. You may not like growing, it may be painful, but if we want the city to get better, we better do something, as opposed to sitting around happy with the way we've done things for 20 years. And I've heard that on this council many times. When I question things, I always have the same answer. We've always done it that way. And if we've always done it that way and it's not working, we should change.
What's not working?
Lots of things.
We have changed, Mr. Michelle. We went from a little town to a city.
I'm not, I'm not arguing your case, you've had your time, you said you hated it, okay? I've got it, I want you to know how I feel, and you should have it.
Let's vote. Yes.
Ferguson?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Schoniger?
No.
Callenger?
No.
Three, three, Mr. Mayor?
I vote no.
Excuse me, my, my last one.
Okay.
And, uh, voice, this, this might, uh, weigh off part of why you feel the way you do about me, that the things that I see there are part of all. I'm gonna make a motion that we repeal the vote from November 6th, the appointed Richard McBane with a six-year term on the planning commission without taking letters of interest from the general public for the position. We should take resumes until Thursday, December 13th, and have the resumes or letters of interest in our council package December 14th, and vote on the appointment December 18th. I don't even mind if it's Mr. McBane, but at the meeting that this was ran through a couple of weeks.
Do you have a second, please?
Second.
At the meeting that this was done at, there was only five council members here. This appointment wasn't up until December 31st, there was seven weeks. It was brought up at that time that there was someone else in the city that had applied and brought a letter in. Keith didn't remember that, and we asked for this to be tabled, since there was five people, and we had a meeting, and the whole council was here. That table was voted down, and it was ran through, knowing that someone else had wanted the, the position, without ever giving any consideration in that, without giving this full, full council consideration. Three members of this council ran it through. That doesn't in my mind, nor should it in yours, present a level of, of trust that i- if we want the city to grow, and you, you welcome people from this city to, to be a part of the city that they live in, to have an appointment that takes six years, and to put someone in there without ever advertising, without ever taking applications, without looking at any other resumes, without interviewing anyone else, and just saying, okay, the guy that we, we ran for election with last November wants this job again, so we're, we're gonna silence it from the public, and we're gonna ram it through, and we don't have a full council here. That's what I think is wrong. So, if you can.
You're gonna have a hard time proving that.
I don't approve, it's in the minutes that you approved.
You're gonna have a hard time proving that's the objective.
I didn't say that was an objective.
You jumped out through saying, I said the objective, to ramrod this through, and I take offense to that now.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, but that's what's in the minutes that we approved. It was called for, for it to be tabled, and it was voted down the table.
Don't you tell me how I vote, and don't you tell me what I said.
Can you read the minutes, and if you don't want to hear it from me?
Don't you tell me that, that I ramrod us something through. Don't you use those words about me.
Well, ask for a table, and the table was denied.
Oh, so, your point has been made.
Also in the paper, it said you said this was possibly personal.
In what paper?
In Katie's paper.
No, she said that Bob said that, and that Bob didn't say that. I read it.
Did you say it to Katie?
You know, Mr. Blakeman, when you ran against me and, and Mr. King for these, these seats we own right now, I remember you telling me that you got more votes than Mr. King and I did, and the public spoke a little bit louder about you. All right?
It is.
And you wanted to be on the planning commission. But I got voted on, that's one of the night you said that. Mr., Mr. McBane ran for city council and was five votes or something, I don't know what.
Don't tell me how many votes it was, Josh. So many votes away from Bob. No, how many votes?
So many votes away from Bob. I would say that the public has spoken.
Why? No one else has had that?
I say the public has spoken. I accept that. I hope there's other people accept that on that. I know the citizens sure accepted, he almost became a councilman. And I know that the board, everyone on the board of that commission is happy with Dick's, so why don't we just keep going like we did before? And deny any new person a chance? The city spoke, the council spoke, and we're about to speak right now, so I call for the vote.
The city didn't speak on plan.
Yes, they did.
When did they do that?
The man got votes to become councilman, you don't think that the city would support him as a chairman?
I'm not, they very well might, but I'm very, Brian's.
That makes my point, thank you.
We should open it up. I didn't say it wasn't.
I called him a vote.
We might, maybe somebody else on the city wants to do it.
Why didn't they come forward?
They weren't invited.
They weren't invited. I haven't seen anybody here, the gentleman here talked about it, has he ever been here?
Oh, many times.
He's here all the time.
Where is he?
Right, right, right there.
How come you haven't expressed your opinion that you wanted to be on commission?
I, I, I'm offended by that, because I really did. The last time there was a public announcement was when a person from the planning commission was appointed. I did send a letter in with my name.
Okay, that's the point that Keith made last night. Did you get the letter, Keith?
I probably did, but, you know, I don't keep them from.
This council doesn't keep you sent a letter. I don't care about. So, decision that we made that night, in my opinion, was a good decision, and I'll stick with it.
I have no problems.
And I apologize to you for not having your letter here for us to see.
I have no problems with that, but we, as a public, should have an opportunity.
We should offer. And I made, I made it clear that night that there was a, a, it's kind of a.
Any comments? Ian?
I don't know, why don't we look? I guess there is.
Mr. Michelle, it can, can take resumes and, and re.
And not repeal it.
And redo it in December.
So vote no, we'll keep it on, but keep them one.
Motion is to repeal, so if you want to repeal the amendment, you would vote yes.
Okay, if we don't want to appeal, we go down, okay.
Ferguson?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
King?
Yes. Yes, Keith.
Schoniger?
No.
Callenger?
No.
Blakeman?
Yes.
Three, three, Mr. Mayor? Three, three, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to make the comment that I think we got the best man for the job.
How do you know? We didn't get other applications.
I said, I made the comment. Don't question me. I don't have to...
I can question you.
I don't have to answer you.
Stop that.
I'm just saying, I didn't have to answer you. I'm just saying, how do you know that?
If anything is, I thought we took the best man.
We took the best because he was the only one here that was able to apply.
You want to make a comment, make a comment.
I am making a comment.
It's your argument back and forth. The person, the person.
We're making comments to one another.
I'd like to say, though, from now on, anyone, if they're interested in any position, send your letter in at any time, and there to be, uh, filed and kept on record until position's open. I think we also should have, uh, I see the sign out there has the members of the different, uh, commissions and boards, we should probably put on there the dates, their term expires, so people can come in and see what that is from now on, and then they can see what the date is, that their term's ending up, if they want that position.
You send the letter to me.
Send it to the city manager.
City manager.
I will instruct my assistants to have file on it.
Can we do anything?
So, any of the letters going in.
Anything on the city website, even though not everybody has access to it, at least if there's something that's coming up term-wise, advertise it there.
I think on the city website, I'm sorry to interrupt, if, couldn't we put the, the term date on there also?
We could do that.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Can we put it on channel 32 as well?
Do we list that on council? Councilmen's names or planning commission's names?
Obviously, why not? It's something to tell me.
I was saying, we don't do that now.
All right. Next items, we have, uh, executive session plan. There's three of them. The first one's consider the purchase of property. The second one's consider sale or lease of real property or interest therein, and the third one is to discuss personnel. Dan, why did you go to executive session?
I'd like to make that motion, and I make a suggestion, uh, that we do the, uh, the one with Mr. Blakeman first, so we don't keep paying any, huh? I make a motion, we want to executive session.
A second?
We want to deal with the current mayor first, because he's a cowardly...
Not that, uh, not that, all right? Sure.
Save money by taking him first.
Okay.
Tell me one comment before we go into session.
I have a motion, and did I get a second?
You do have a second.
Okay, yes, you may.
Uh, Joyce, I respect your opinions. I truly do. I know you sat up here for a long time. But where I worked or worked does not influence my, my vote. And last I looked, the mayor and another councilperson are related. So, for you to say to me that I worked at one dime for Ryan, which I did, but I no longer do, really is pretty offensive that you think that his vote would sway the way I vote. That is completely incorrect.
And I'm not saying that it would, but the...
Then why did you even bring it up?
The appearance is, if that was still true, the, the appearance would not be...
Ryan and I have voted differently many a times.
Okay, and, and I apologize for even suggesting that.
Okay. And just for the record, uh, who's it, Callenger and I, she's my sister-in-law, please someone didn't know that we argued.
Here, applause.
Okay, we need to move on to the executive session.
Michelle?
Yes.
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 Mr. Mayor, uh, one more question, whether there'll be action taken after, so the people will know whether to sit here or not.
I believe so.
You think there may be action?
I think, I think there's a good chance.
There may be action after the executive session.